All right, good evening. Welcome to the Planning Board, January 16, 2018. We're a little bit late, so I apologize for that. We're in a meeting with the continued zoning discussion for the 2018 Town Meeting bylaws for recreational marijuana. And I know, Kathy, that you've given us some drafts.
Sure. What you have in front of you tonight are, should be, three pieces of paper, or three, three articles, one, a couple pages. So there's the, two of them you've already seen. One is the draft article which would prohibit, the zoning article which would prohibit recreational marijuana, and it has the use table attached to it. And we can certainly, you know, go over that. The second article that you have, just to complete the packet, is the general red, general bylaw that the town will also be asked to adopt. Basically, it's the same language, but that's not a zoning bylaw. And then the third article, which will follow these two on the warrant, is the bylaw that, the inevitable bylaw that we have to have on the warrant in the event that the prohibiting the use doesn't pass. Because again, this, this, the way the state, the way the ballot question was written is that you, just by, by being silent, doesn't mean anything. You have to say yes or no in your zoning bylaw. So if for some reason the two articles that relate to prohibiting recreational marijuana don't pass, then the article giving it a spot, which at your last meeting you decided on the highway business, which is Route 9, which is where the adult entertainment is located, and also it was the district where we had originally proposed the medical marijuana, or the dispensaries for medical marijuana.
Two, two initial questions?
Mm-hmm.
On, on the first one, were the establishments prohibited? Do we need to put in here somewhere that there shall be no use variances granted? Or do we have to say that out loud? Or it's because it's prohibited and there, you can't even get a use variant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And, and the, it, it, it'll, the exact reason will come back to me. So let's, so let's proceed with the second one.
Okay, that's fine. And I'm just, on the, on the second one?
Mm-hmm.
For?
The general?
That has the, the table of uses on the front?
That, that, the article, there, there's two tables on the prohibiting it, because it's prohibited in every, the proposal is to prohibit it in every zone.
Okay.
And then the second zoning article is the, the one that I think that we would probably want to talk most about tonight, because this is the first time you're seeing it. It's modeled after the, the medical marijuana bylaw that we had in 2013, 2014. It did not pass, but it was modeled after that. Town Council has reviewed it. There's a couple things I want to talk to you tonight that I had some questions about, and that I was able to clarify with Town Council today. So I guess if there aren't any questions on the, you know, prohibiting the recreational marijuana?
Any questions on this end, right now?
I have a question, but it's on the, if it doesn't get prohibited one.
Okay, so, hold that.
Yep.
Any questions on the first two on this end?
I do, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So Kathy, I sent you an email, I think, before Christmas, indicating that I had been challenged by someone to show the wording from the Town Council that said that if you had a medical marijuana establishment, then that could also sell recreational stuff there. And we couldn't find it. And I asked you to get clarification from Town Council. Did you? And if so, what did you find?
Yes, yep, I, I sent it. I sent it to you, I sent it to everybody.
Because the, the, the one that, that the Town Council said, if your medical marijuana establishment was created prior to July of 2015, I think it was, then, or 2016, here's the deal. But it didn't say what happens if you establish one in the future. And that, that was my point. That's what I wanted to know.
Well, I, I didn't bring the email with me, and I can, I-
Because your responding email, I think, said, well, here's, here's the opinion. But the opinion was, if it was established prior to July of 2016, then they can sell. But my question is, what if tomorrow someone establishes a medical marijuana facility?
Well, they really can't. I mean, and I think that was the part of the point of Town Council's email, is that because of the, of the length of the process, and because the, the town has indicated that, that the town is not interested, given that they are proposing a ban on recreational and medical, the town would not offer a letter of non-opposition. So therefore, the, the, the company wouldn't be able to proceed with the state without that letter from the town.
I think the other part of the, the timing on that, July 2016, I think that was the date by which you had to have your application in to the, the Commonwealth's Agency. Now, I can't remember, DPH, maybe?
It was the Department of Public Health, yes.
Right, so you had to have your application into DPH by then, and the ability to acquire a medical facility license is closed. So nobody's going to get one after July 2016, unless a town now allows them, again, and there's, they follow the, the current procedure, whatever the current procedure will be, to obtain them. So if somebody went and applied for one today, they'd have to follow whatever the procedure is. I believe they got rid of the medical distinction, didn't they? Now we're just going there.
Yes, the, as part of the-
All recreational.
Right, as part of the ballot question.
Right.
The, the regulations have now merged the medical and the recreational.
Right, so if you didn't have your license in place by July 2016, which was the last opportunity to get one, then you aren't under the, the original medical bylaws.
Okay.
And the, again, the, through the Board of Selectmen, you know, we have discussed it at their meetings, as well as these meetings, that the town, you know, we're, we're wrapping recreational and medical into the prohibition. So, so again, the, given that the town is proceeding to prohibit it, the, the town wouldn't be in any position to issue a letter of non-opposition. I mean, we'd be going against our own bylaw that we're proposing.
Okay.
My question actually was really similar to that, so we could probably tag it easily now, is with, if it doesn't get prohibited, should we have the medical here? Because we're placing recreational on highway business, but say, so you know for sure that medical is going to go away? Because I thought that was something that was still being discussed. They didn't know if they were going to release new licenses, or if it's going to be all rolled together. So I was just wondering, if it doesn't get prohibited, and we do have to place it somewhere, and we place recreational and highway business, should medical also be placed in highway business? Because there's nothing for medical, so if medical did continue in the future, then it could go anywhere.
But it, but it's, but it's not continuing.
It's not going to?
No, there is-
It's called out.
It, it's the, the, no, but in the state statute, it's now, you know, chapter 94G, I think it is, C or G, that, that now regulates marijuana in Massachusetts.
Okay.
So the Department of Public Health is no longer responsible for just medical marijuana. So it's now, everything has moved over to the Cannabis Control Commission. And so there is no separate license that you're going to get just to do a medical dispensary.
Any other questions at this point, George? Okay, so you, did you want to review the other articles?
Sure. So, so the article to prohibit, which obviously will be passed over if the, if the prior two articles, you know, are approved, but like I said, it was modeled after the registered medical marijuana dispensary bylaw. And the Town Council has reviewed it, has made, made one change, but I discussed with them tonight that we just, I mean, again, this is just a, you know, a draft for you to take a look at tonight, but the, on page, the second page, where we talked about marijuana establishments, at our last meeting, we talked about with the, the mapping that we had done, that it needs to be 300 feet. He inserted 500 feet instead of 300 feet, because 500 feet is what you're allowed under the new cannabis control, I mean, the new, the, under the commission. You, a town can just automatically say 500 feet. However, we did the, the math, so to speak, and we, if we, you know, after I explained to him, and if we kept in the 500 feet, then our bylaw, that section could potentially be challenged, because we really don't have any areas-
Effective prohibition.
Exactly, exactly. So I, I believe there was, and I brought the maps with me, if anyone wants to take another look, but I believe there was, you know, two, two pieces, two, two parcels of land that could potentially, under the 500 feet, but one was part of the state highway layout, and then the other, you know, was, was a legitimate piece, but it was just one parcel that was part of a much larger partial, parcel, excuse me. So, so we understood why, you know, why we had proposed 300 feet initially. And so along with the, well, I'll, I'll go back to that point in a second.
Kathy, on that map, there were some other larger parcels that were partially encumbered by those blockout zones, that if they had subdivided the parcel, they would be, there would be an additional parcel available, right? I'm trying to remember if-
Um, yes.
Under the 300 feet, there was a couple that could, that could create a new parcel.
They, yes, they could. Here, the, the 300-foot map, if you want, I can just pass it down. It's basically right, ironically, it's right where the, the parcel that would be available is right where the HB for highway business, I mean, it's just, you know, happens to be located on the map. But this is, this piece here on Route 9 is part of a much larger piece. It all belongs to where the Y is located. And so that, that is a piece that, you know, would potentially be available along with some additional property, you know, down in this area.
Okay.
So there was, so there's technically, you know, more than one, one parcel. So along those lines-
The piece that's available, that's, is that where the car dealerships are?
No, the car dealerships on this map, Route 9 basically is the, sort of the town boundary. The car dealerships are right around in this area. This is the, I know this, I'm sorry, that, this is probably difficult to look at, but this is where the restaurant is, on Route 9.
Mexican restaurant.
The standalone Mexican restaurant, yeah. And the car dealerships are, like, right across the street from, from that area. So the car dealerships are down in this area.
I'm talking about like, where the guns, the car placed near the gun shop?
No, I was thinking of the, is it at Lexus?
The Lexus is probably right about in here. Lexus is part, same thing, part North Row, part, you know, West Row.
So where's Route 9?
So Route 9 comes up through here. This, this is the interchange right in here.
Yeah.
So it comes through here, and then comes down to the, you know, property line, I mean, excuse me, the town boundary line. So right, right in here is where we have the, this light purple area, that's where the gun shop is presently located, and the gas station, and so forth. So the areas that are available are these gray areas without any hatching.
It's on the other side of Route 9.
Yep, yep.
People probably don't even realize it's more than that.
Is, yeah. So then there was a question that, that I believe Amy had brought up about being able to limit your bylaw to saying that you only wanted one establishment in your town. And when I explained the, the, the mapping exercise that we had gone through, and given that there was probably one to two parcels, Town Council thought it might be a little restrictive if, if you wanted to go forward and just limit it to one. You can, if you want to, he said, but given, given the exercise that you've gone through, and that you've shown that there's probably two parcels, he said it just, you know, it's, wouldn't be, he didn't advise it.
Now with social consumption, could Casaviata, right there on Route 9, could they sell it? So there could be a third one?
No, because what, because part of this bylaw, skip, now skipping to that part, the social consumption part, which is something that's on the top of page two, under marijuana establishments, number two, we have a definition for what a marijuana social consumption operation is. And so we're proposing that that also be prohibited. And basically what that is, is like Amy was saying, you know, the, an existing restaurant could apply, if the town so wanted to allow it, that the, an existing restaurant, or a new restaurant could open up, or a new coffee shop, or a, restaurants are kind of the easiest thing to use as an example, but they could allow social consumption in their existing facility, or in their proposed facility. But it, the facility itself is not considered a recreational marijuana establishment, because their primary use is a restaurant, or a coffee shop, or a bakery, or, you know, a, a sandwich shop, or something. But what's happening in other parts of the country is a social consumption aspect where the, some communities are allowing an establishment to apply for a license to, to the community, so that they could do social consumption. They don't sell it on the premises, but somebody could bring, you, you wouldn't be able to smoke, because smoking is prohibited, so you could vape, or you could, you know, bring your own food, I guess, to consume on sites, you know, and they, and they would encourage that. But they themselves wouldn't be selling it. So because that is something that's part of these regulations, Town Council felt that it was appropriate to, you know, to, to, to put in here.
So, just a question on that. I see how it is identified in the table of uses on page one, but on page two, marijuana establishment is defined, as is marijuana social consumption operations. Everything after that only references marijuana establishments. Is that intended to include the marijuana social consumption operations?
Oh, as far as you mean in, in location?
In, everywhere after the definition of the marijuana social consumption operations, those words don't appear again.
All right, so I'll find out if we need to, every time establishment is written, that we also have, have to add in social consumption operation?
Seems to make sense that you have to.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So a social consumption, I thought you said it's prohibited, but it's permitted?
Well, no, in this, in this, I mean, this is the bylaw-
Right.
-to, to permit it.
Right. Now, could we prohibit it? Like, could you have marijuana establishments allowed on highway business, but not allow the social consumption? Because wouldn't the social consumption, like I just said before, open it up to the Casaviata? Like, if social consumption's allowed-
If-
Then why wouldn't they be allowed to sell it?
They don't sell it, you can bring it there.
That would be a third location, though. Like, we said, there's only one or two, but now Casaviata might be able to have it in their location.
Only if it doesn't fall within one of the, the buffer zones that prohibits it.
Right, and they, um-
There's only two parcels where it's drawn.
They, they are, they wouldn't actually be allowed, Amy, because they are, they fall under one of the areas that, that we're using as a, that it has to be buffered.
So part of it is, so it's, oh, I see part of it's not-
If, if any portion of it is, that is in the buffered zone, then the parcel's excluded.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I can-
So Walmart couldn't sell it?
I can certainly ask Town Council if, if, if you wanted to, and again, you know, I, I know this bylaw is, I mean, we have to take this just as seriously as the bylaw to prohibit it. So if you, if you wanted, if the question is, is that you would want to allow a marijuana establishment, but not allow the social consumption operation, you know, does that need to, does that need to be called out and separately said no to? I mean, if that's how you're all feeling, I mean, whatever the majority of the board.
Because down even Indian Meadow Golf Course, is that partially covered, or is there-
But that's not highway business. You have to stay within highway business.
So really, only those two lots that were identified would be the only place where a social consumption operation could be opened?
Right, and it, and they're both on the-
But if the village gun shop changed over, they could possibly, or they're partially covered?
They're, they're too, I think they're too close to the ball fields.
Right, so they're-
Yeah, I, I just don't see the lines through it on my map. On my map, I see the lines.
No, you don't, you don't see the lines, well, again, it's, it's done in layers. So first, we put on what the designated areas are, the land uses that we say that you have to be 300 feet from.
Mm-hmm.
So you have to be 300 feet from the ball fields, you have to be 300 feet from the, we say the gun shop, but it's basically because it's a retail. It's not, it's not that it's specifically a gun shop, it's that it's retail. You have to be 300 feet away from Walmart. And then your map also shows Business South, which is where you pick up Teamworks, and the golf course, and Armino's Coffee. But, but you've excluded, you're not considering that zoning district. So you're only looking at highway business, and the areas where it would be allowed is just this solid gray area.
Okay, I guess I was confused, because it didn't have the lines through it, the village gun shop, it looked open.
Well, I, I, I mean, if you want, I can, I can-
Oh, no, I understand.
Bring the laptop next time, and we can just go through how we applied the layers.
That's okay, as long as it's, because I noticed the one with the HB, that's one of the lots you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
That, that's the gray colored?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then to the left, near the red line, that whole gray area?
Yes, yep, and, and like I said, part of that is the highway layout.
Okay, I guess I was looking at the ones that just didn't have the lines through it, which is why I saw Casaviata and the gun shop.
But again, tho- those are the areas that you have to be 300 feet from.
Yep.
So you can't, that's an excluded use. You can't, you can't, you know, by definition, in your bylaw, of the, you know, school, licensed childcare facility, library, playground, public park, youth center, swimming pool, arcade facility, or similar facility in which minors commonly congregate, that's where the majority of our purple is.
Okay, so all the purple areas are the ones you can't be in.
So is that, is that something you'd like me to pursue with Town Council, is to find out if you can prohibit social consumption operations in this bylaw?
You mean prohibit one while allowing the other?
Yes.
It just can't hurt to find out if it's even an option.
Yeah, and we can certainly find out if it's an option, yeah.
The easiest would be if it's not an option, and then the decision's made.
Right, that's fine.
And then I think Teresa had the second question, where it's only mentioned once in paragraph one and two, but not again throughout it.
Yeah, yep, well, yep, I'll add that. And then, and then there was also, Amy had a question about, there is a, a local tax option that can be added, I mean, adopted by the communities, but it's not a zoning. So it's not something that you have to put forward at, at Town Meeting. So it's something that I'll talk to the town administrator about, so that's why there isn't any language in here about the, adopting a local tax option on this.
Figured if we're going to allow it, might as well get the tax revenue right.
True, I mean, it should be. I mean, there should, there's, you know, it would make sense that there would be an article, but it's not an article that you have to, you know, it, it wouldn't be included in this, it would be a separate article, it's not zoning.
So just going back to the marijuana social consumption operations, on the first page of that same article-
Mm-hmm.
Under your sub-paragraph A, your definition for the use regs, I think, before identifying marijuana establishments, and we're going to define the social consumption ops in the table of uses, we also need to define it up there in G7G as well, or G7H, I guess it would be. Just copy this from the second page, because I think those definitions are the same, right?
Yep, so I'll find out.
Yeah.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we don't accidentally leave something out, and then all of a sudden, we're in a tight spot.
So I think other than that, the, as far as the, on the second page, the second, third, and this is a, I think, one sentence that went over, the, it's pretty much the, the, you know, it mirrors what was in the medical marijuana. So as far as, again, your, your buffers, your procedure for operating one, and then the reporting, I mean, it's slightly different, but because it's under different statutes and so forth, but. And then, just back on the very first page, the, the towns have the option of either allowing an establishment by right or by special permit. And you had gone through the discussion back with the medical marijuana, that you wanted to do it by right. And so I just followed suit and did this by right. And Town Council said you could, if you wanted to, do it by special permit, and then I would just have to, I would have to just make reference to our special permit, you know, regulations elsewhere in the bylaw. But I didn't, I, I, I just, I just took, I kind of just took your conversation from, you know, a few years ago, as to why you wanted it as a yes, and just kept it as a yes. But that's entirely up to you, whether you want to change it to a special permit.
Okay. Just, Leo, George, do either of you have a feeling, one way or the other, on special permit versus metter right?
A special permit would be looking at what specifically, just like lighting and-
Well, with the, I mean, it would still be, I mean, whether it was by right or special permit, it would still go through the site plan approval process. But with the special permit, you can always put additional conditions on something, but the special permit criteria is, you have to look at, there's seven criteria, is it an appropriate location for the use? Will it, if developed there, will it adversely affect the neighborhood? There shouldn't be any nuisance or serious hazard, adequate and appropriate facilities for the operation of the proposed use. The proposed use will conform to any special requirements of the special permit granting authority. We'd have to determine who that would be. The proposal is in substantial harmony with the North Row master plan, and the proposed use could not reasonably be altered to reduce adverse impacts on the natural environment, development patterns of the town. So it, I didn't, I didn't look at this as, if, if you were going to allow a recreational marijuana establishment, that it wasn't any different than any other business establishment. And, and they weren't called out for special permit uses.
I don't feel a need for a special permit.
I don't either.
I think we should. Just because it's an extra layer, you never know what type of application they're bringing to the board, and say you want lighting, or fencing, or parking, or whatever, or can't you set hours, or, I don't know, I just think it wouldn't hurt versus by right to have someone look at it.
I think we should have a special permit, because I understand what you're saying about a business, but it's a new business you set would have to community, Kathy, not one that's been existing, so.
I mean, it's-
In case there's something we missed, there might be a condition that you can add with a special permit.
So the med, the original medical marijuana statute had pretty specific provisions for security around those buildings, facilities. Does this statute have the same?
I honestly don't. Let me see if I can just find it very quickly. The, the regulations, if anyone has looked, the regu, the draft regulations, a hundred and seven pages long.
Well, I started. I got nearly twenty-five.
So.
It's double spaced.
What I'm looking at is just what's within the local control. Local control, you have, you know, signs determining whether it's a public nuisance.
Even in our own bylaw here, on number four on the second page, our distance can be reduced by twenty-five percent if it would be effectively prohibited, and then it says the applicant demonstrates that the marijuana establishment will employ adequate security measures to prevent diversion of marijuana persons. But even with that security, if there was a special permit, then you could decide what the adequate security measures are. Like in that, number four, it doesn't say what the adequate security measures are.
I'm actually more concerned about exterior, like building security.
Right.
Not distribution to minors.
Right.
When I ask that question.
Well, this has to do with location.
So Theresa, I'm sorry, your concern is?
It's not so much security and distribution, with respect to distribution to minors, it's the, the building security, the property security. So I, I think before I would give a thumbs up or down on the special permit, I'm, I wanna, I wanna take a look at that part of the provisions, before I can say one way or the other. Whether I would want that, because I do understand that it is, it's a business, like any other business, being allowed. But it is a new business in town, and where it's one that tends to have a little more concern associated with it, because of the nature of the business. I just wanna do a little more research before I say, no, we don't need a special permit.
That's certainly one of the things I can ask town council, too, as to whether or not security, or how, how is the security laid out, how is the CCC laid out, the security, if, if they, if they have?
Right.
Or should that be taken into consideration as part of a special permit?
Right.
Cause it was pretty extensive, Kathy, in the first draft, when we first sat down and talked about it a couple of years ago. The security, what they were, you know, the first draft about how the security was primarily because it was its cash business, and there was several.
Oh, for the medical, for the medical marijuana, yeah, yeah, well, I mean, it still is a cash business. And, you know, now everything is up in the air, as far as what Attorney General's going to do in each state. So, I mean, that's a, that's something out of our hands.
Right. Okay. Anything else on these? I would just, I would just say, so these three will go on the warrant?
Yes.
These two articles will go on the warrant. So, because we've got a moratorium in place now, and we've got potential, we've got proposed bylaws ready to go. If anyone were to apply today to cannabis, not today, but April, after April one, to the Cannabis Control Commission, our moratorium is sufficient to defeat that application for Northborough. So we don't need a special town meeting or anything like that.
Correct.
And so if I read town council's memorandum, which I think we've had a couple now correctly, we don't have to worry about that.
Correct, they've, they've confirmed, and they've spoken with the Attorney General's Office, and as far as the, you know, the moratoriums are considered, you know, the, the law of the community, as they always have been. So, so the moratorium on recreational marijuana is not being treated any differently than any other moratorium.
Okay, okay. So just those towns that don't have the moratorium in place are the ones that need to kinda worry about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's not us, so, okay.
Theresa, just on a note, Amy just showed me that restaurants including alcoholic beverages, so they had to open a restaurant serving alcohol, needed all special permits.
Yep, we did that in two thousand and nine.
So that, and a couple of other ones here, so that's just food for thought.
Okay, excellent, thank you, good to know.
All right, so you, just to reiterate, or resummarize for me, your three, your three areas of questions are about adding the, you know, throughout the rest of the bylaw, if you were to allow the social consumption, does that need to be carried through in the rest of the bylaw? And then, the second is whether or not you can call out the social consumption as a separate use and potentially prohibit that. And then the third is relating to whether or not you wanna make it a special permit, specifically questions about the security measures, and what's being required by the CCC.
Is there anything else that you guys had, anything else on that end?
No.
Yep, that should be all done.
So the, just a couple more, sort of just public information about that. The, the Cannabis Control Commission, I'll be going to the one in Worcester, but just as they did initially, they're holding a round of public hearings. And they're starting, actually, on February fifth, they have them throughout the state. And, you know, certainly the closest to one is located in Worcester, and that'll be February seventh. And that's from nine to noon, at the Worcester Public Library. So they, you know, they're doing the same thing that they did initially, you know, holding the, the series of hearings, so. I'll be participating in that, along with many other communities. I will follow up with town council, I'll have you responses, you know, in time for our next meeting, January twenty-fourth. So you'll just, you know, maybe we can wrap that up on the twenty-fourth. And then, like you said, those three will go on the warrant. And then we will look at, originally, we had discussed having a joint hearing, because we figured that it's, it's just, it's going to be the same audience that would go to the selectmen and come to you. We'll have a joint hearing with the two boards on these, you know, on these bylaws. Okay, so we'll look at the date, I had just said to you that potentially we could look at, we will, we'll coordinate it with a selectman's meeting, and I'll talk to the town administrator about whether or not we should have a larger room. But your, January twenty-fourth, your meeting is primarily devoted to working with our consultant Judy Barrett on the duplex bylaw. And then, your next two meetings would be February sixth and February twentieth, those are Tuesday nights. The selectmen typically meets on the other, they meet on the first, no, excuse me, the second and the fourth Mondays. But I'll get the dates of those meetings and what the agendas are, and, you know, how we can coordinate that. I'll do that through the town administrator and Jason, and, you know, get some potential dates, so that, to figure out if we're all available.
While we're on it, I won't be around on the twentieth.
Okay.
What's the, what's the week of school vacation?
That's the week.
That's the week, okay.
I won't be around.
I won't be here either.
Three absences that week.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, unless you have any other questions, that's what I have for recreational marijuana so far.
You know, anything else on the side? Anything else on that end? Excellent, thanks Kathy, that's, I'm thankful for putting all that together. I would just, I would just note for the board that there is the email from today, from town council.
Yes, that, yep.
That was included in the papers that were given to us today.
And that, that specifically talks about, those were the questions that I had discussed with him today, about limiting the number of recreational establishments, and then also the, the local taxation, the option for the local taxation. Perfect.
Let's see, we have, is there anything else relative to the, our bylaws amendments that we need to discuss tonight?
Not that I have planned, I mean, what, what Judy Barrett is preparing for you is a memo that you'll all receive prior to the January twenty-fourth meeting with her. And in that, she, I believe the intent of that is she's summarizing, you know, the, the survey responses that you all had, and putting together her suggestions for, you know, how you, you know, what, what you propose for, for town meeting. We'll also have, Amy had asked, it's something that Judy and I had, had planned on doing, is the, what we did in-house is we put together a map showing where all the duplexes are located in the town of Northborough. And so Judy, that's what Judy has been working off of in conjunction with.
By Jason.
By Jason. In conjunction with the information from the assessors also.
Right.
And so that map shows not only duplexes, but it also shows what are called conversions, where someone has either converted a single family into a two-family, or for the purpose of the assessing department, when someone has a single family and then adds, say, an accessory dwelling unit. So, and then we'll have a, you know, a total for you of, you know, how many single family homes there are in town, how many duplexes, and how many multifamilies there, there are in town. All right? So that's, good night.
Thank you.
So that's as, as far as the, so it'll be the marijuana and the duplexes for, for town meeting.
Okay.
And then as far as, actually, sort of jumping ahead on the agenda, but as far as the other two things that I had, Theresa, were just the minutes. And then I just wanted to talk, just bring you up to date on a couple of the ZBA applications.
Okay, so let's, let's get the minutes out of the way if we can. Has everybody had a chance to review the November fifteen minutes?
Yes.
Did anybody have any changes?
No.
I just had one question on page five, in the middle, and it was a sentence that said, it was Kathy's sentence, but it said, Ms. Jewett noted the likelihood of the prohibition passing seems low. But I think, I don't, what the board needs to do is diligence in case it should fail. But it wouldn't be the opposite, I thought you said the likelihood of it.
It should be, I'm sorry.
In the middle of page five, kind of in the middle of the biggest paragraph, it says, Ms. Jewett noted that the likelihood of the prohibition passing seems low. And I think you had said the possibility of it not passing. Seemed low.
I should say not passing.
Yeah, that's, yep.
That was the only thing I had. It's terrible when you miss a not.
No, it's not.
Any other changes?
We'll make that change.
Okay. All right, zero motion.
Move to accept the minutes of the planning board meeting for November fifteen, two thousand and seventeen, as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Do we have any other minutes outstanding aside from December five?
That's it, the December, and, and then, you know, tonight.
Yay, great, excellent, that's fantastic.
Kathy, are these online?
The minutes?
Yep, okay.
Yep, there's a, a page that, that's posted of all of the, the boards, all of the boards in towns, agendas and minutes.
Okay.
Yep, so as soon as they're, I mean, just two seconds for the processes, the, I'll correct them tomorrow, this is, this is what we do with all the boards. They'll get corrected tomorrow, whatever the revisions are, and then they get sent to the town clerk's office, and then I think it's just within a, a day or so that they, they have to convert them into a PDF, and, you know, and then they post them on the website.
Before we get to ZBA, Amy, what do we have this week?
I had, back to the sign, I talked about it at the last meeting.
You are like an applicant, you have to go before or so. And a line item to the agenda, it's like Amy's.
This is something I just wanted to talk about, cause we're talking about the signs downtown, CVS. And I was concerned with the whole dental sign and Business West and how it's lit up. So I did a little research on it, and on the way home from the, I stopped, cause I was, oh no, CVS is the same way. But it wasn't, CVS is internally lit, but those are letters that you actually put on the sign, they're not digitally changed. Where the dental was passed, I, we got a copy of their application and decision as an internally lit pylon sign. But when you do research on signs, those are so new, they're actually called EMCs, which are electronic message centers. And Marlboro, cause I looked up Marlboro, cause I had been told that. Yep. I was told that Marlboro doesn't allow these, cause it's like a Vegas strip. But when I did do research on Marlboro, they do have a separate definition for electronic message center. And in their downtown business, they don't allow any illuminated signs, or backlit signs, or electronic message centers. But I was just wondering if Northborough, because this is so new, should also have something in their bylaws concerning electronic message center? Because those are actually different than internally illuminated signs, like internally illuminated would be behind flu shots now available, that lights up at night, so you can see those letters. Where the newer signs that have displays, and they have the weather, and they have all sorts of animation you can do, is a whole new thing. So.
The Lions have that illuminated sign, which may have been one of the first ones.
But that's considered like a digital sign, like those are even different, that's like a monument sign with digital, changeable display. So they're, like Marlboro, if you look at their definitions, they have illuminated sign, they have electronic message centers, and they have a message board, which has digital letters. So I think the Lion sign is more of a message board with the digital display, where these EMCs is more of an LCD. Where you have colors, and you have, I looked it up on my phone, to a pictures of electronic changeable message boards. And when you look at the pictures, they have, it's more like the dotted.
Like the signs we have, we see on the side of the road.
Right.
The DOT.
Right. So I, I just was, I'm just concerned with downtown Northborough, even if we don't have a definition for electronic message center, which other towns seem to have. But even Marlboro doesn't allow the illuminated signs in downtown, and I know when I've talked to people, and they talk about the character, and, and even in the town of Northborough, in a report, they write, the town of Northborough is a suburban community with a classic New England charm. I just don't feel like if we allow all these LCD illuminated signs in the downtown, that's really classic New England charm, I think what will really change, I'm thinking of like, the Town Common, and even the Video Bank, and it's starting to go, to look a little nicer, I'd hate to have a big lit up sign right next to it. It just.
I, I agree, I don't like them.
I just don't think they fit in the downtown, I haven't thought about Business East and Business West, but I think the downtown in general, I wouldn't wanna see a whole bunch of lit, flashing, colorful signs with pictures of suns, and the weather, and the time, and I just feel that's not the direction that we were going in, so it would be stepping back. Cause I think even St. Bernadette's is more of a digital electronic message board, that underneath the sign has the, but these are a whole new ballgame with the colors and the, if you wanna read it over for next week, I just added this stuff from Marlboro, and how they defined it, and where they allowed it, and they don't allow them in residential or their downtown.
So I'm confused, you don't like the message that they're putting on the sign?
I just think it doesn't fit in the character with that.
But I'm not sure we could allow someone, I, like, for example, what if St. Bernadette's wanted to put a sun up there and say, hey, it's a sunny day? I mean, maybe they could, is that what we're trying to do?
I just don't think it should be in the downtown, I just don't think we should have a lot of, and there's a whole different definition for gas station with their signs, but I just think any of the signs that light up and should be lined in the downtown, like, these are the first ones coming in, but who's to say that every business going forward is now not gonna have a lit up sign going through the center of town?
I just, the reason I ask is, I think we've always talked about how it's portrayed like illumination, but I don't think we've ever talked about the content, right? Like what someone puts in. Like what if all of a sudden Honey, um, not Honey Farms, but what is it, the other gas station downtown? Cumberland Farms wants to put. Cumberland Farms wants to put in half gallon of milk for, you know, is that okay? Like I just, I don't, I know what's, what is okay and what's not. What if CVS wants to put in like they do in other places like, you know?
Well, CVS doesn't have it right now. They just have the letters that you change by hand.
So you're not, you're not trying to regulate speech. You're trying to regulate the, the way that that speech is.
Right.
Well downtown, if you go to downtown, probably like, like I don't even know, I haven't gone through Shrewsbury Center lately or Western or Subbury, but a lot of people have the classic, like the Vidia sign that's just Vidia Bank. It's not lit up, it's not multicolored, it's not, the weather today is forty-two degrees. I just, I just think, from what I hear from people, is they want to clean up the downtown and have it look nice. I think if you drive through and you see Vidia Bank, I still say, okay, that's Vidia Bank. It doesn't have to be blue or red, white and blue with, you know, lights and colors and.
I agree, and I would extend it to Business West and East too. I don't think it's just downtown, I think they're unappealing no matter where they are.
I don't disagree with you, but I would include St. Bernadette's and the Lion sign in that because they have changeable message that are electronically displayed.
Okay, through lights.
I think they're all equally, I don't mean to use the word offensive because that's a little harsh, but they're equally.
Unappealing.
I was just hoping for this year's town meeting because they're just starting to come in. So I was hoping for this year's town meeting just to get a.
And I do think the Lions Club does have the weather on it, they just don't have a sun. You know, they have like the weather and the day.
They just have letters.
They have letters, but they don't have a graphic.
Yeah. If you go through maybe this, you know, before the next meeting, read it. Marlboro's pretty detailed and they say like, I think even like city, cities can have, you know, signs like that or, I don't know, but they have a lot of details. I found it interesting.
Well, so let's say that we did do this and we did Business East, Downtown, Business West. Is there any place in town except maybe industrial where we would otherwise be okay with it?
Would we want it out on highway business?
Highway business or?
What's down?
Highway business is probably a lost cause, so I wouldn't worry.
So who cares about?
What about those places that just have like illuminated, um, open? Is that considered to be digital? Like, um, open?
Well, I think one of the things that, you know, I don't know that this can be something for this year's town meeting. Because I want to give you the history of how this happened. And Michelle was very much involved with this along with Rick. And it was probably over a year of time that Michelle, and not to say that we can't change a bylaw, that's not what I'm saying. But the time that it took for us to incorporate changeable message signs into the bylaw that you all agreed with doing, Michelle and Rick went and met with individual business owners over like a year's time of saying, you know, these are the, these are the issues that we're hearing about signs from the Board of Selectmen, from residents, from other business owners. You know, tell us your side of the story. What is it that you need in order to operate? And so that's how, this was the compromise that came about of, and they were all here at meetings also. Do you, I mean, you have to recall that, Michelle?
We had the big meeting at the library.
Yes.
Were you part of that?
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember.
Signs, it's a huge issue. It's a huge hot button issue. And I don't think, at least I would advise against it, of not incorporating the businesses and the residents into a process. I mean, I think we probably worked on it at least two years of just getting this changeable message board in here. Because how people wanted that, that was the response from residents and business owners.
Well, it puts pressure on them to get rid of their sandwich boards too.
Exactly, right, right. So that was the way, that was all the complaints, was about those message boards, part, most of the complaints. And so how do we solve that? And so this was, this was the solve for it. And absolutely the LEDs and the, and the, all, you know, all that technology, I mean, it's changing every day, never mind every year. So I don't think that, that it's a, you know, that it's a bad thing or a negative thing to go in and take another look at the bylaw, but I, you know, they're due February fifth. So I don't think that justice could be done to the process. And I think that you would probably end up with a lot of kickback at town meeting.
Can we just do?
Just based on my experience.
Can we just do the one line where they're not in the downtown at least for, I just, I think I was part, I remember listening to this about the changeable message boards, but I never pictured it illuminated and digital. Like I remember hearing the sandwich signs and people don't like them on the road and changeable message signs. And I pictured them like CVS, where they can go and change the letters. Like I didn't picture all this digitally illuminated, and I don't know how many people did. I just think, look, because it is China, it is changing all the time and.
So I think St. Bernadette's is a good example of, they're a church and not a business. But what their need was, is instead of putting out registration begins on the lawn on, you know, Monday for, and having the lawn signs out, or we have the service going on or we're having this special event, they could use their little board to actually get the message out to the public. I'm surprised, to be honest with you, that banks don't do it more for advertising their, you know, come in for free checking or whatever, they just don't. The banks that we have don't do it. And I think the gas station only really changes their, what their gas goes for, the prices. They don't really do anything else. I do have a concern on some of the smaller ones, even the pizza shops. I'll see they'll have like a little illuminated, open, and then they turn it off when they're not open. So people know when they're open at night. I don't know if that's considered a digital sign.
Well, I suppose it all depends on what the, whether it is, whether it's neon or, you know.
But it's also inside the store as opposed to freestanding signs, which I think are the bigger problem. Okay, yeah.
So even CVS, people can see CVS and they'll stop. I don't know how much, if they write paper towels are four ninety-nine, how much to draw that is. Or like what if Dunkin' Donuts has a big lit up one and says coffee ninety-nine cents to them? Like I don't think, they don't really put out sandwich boards anyways. So I don't see how.
We've got some business, new business opportunities right in the downtown area.
And, but doesn't need to be illuminated. The downtown's pretty limited at night. Anyways, like I don't, I just have a problem with the illumination, I guess, at night.
I mean, you could, you could make it not part of the bylaw and put it back to design review and have design review at which point now we try to go through, we don't think, make things so black and white. We try to say, you know, what is going to be on your sign or what are you advertising? We try to do it that way, but again.
But if it's not, if it's not something that's allowed in the bylaw, the design review committee wouldn't have any leeway.
That's right.
To work, to try to be creative about something.
So it's not something, because of the relationship that, that Rick and Michelle established with the businesses and creating the current sign law. It's not something we'd want to consider just put a moratorium on until, so that we have a year to explore it.
Well, I don't know that, I don't know that because you have a signed bylaw, I don't know that then putting a moratorium.
On just the electronic ones?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if that would be supported by the Attorney General because the, a moratorium is because it's going to cause, you know, could cause, you know, detrimental, you know, effects to the community. You know, if you, if something were to go forwards, such as recreational marijuana or such as.
Being blinded by a sign and driving off the road.
I mean, if that.
It affects the character.
Again, that. You know, if the, if the, if the wattage is a concern, I mean, that's something that the building inspector can definitely, you know, go out and take a look at. I think he had indicated, I think it was at one of the recent meetings, that he was going to have the local inspector start to work on signs in town, the number of signs. The number of signs that people are requesting versus the number of signs that are, you know, allowed. I, I just think that it's a, that it's not a quick fix. I mean, it's your bylaw if you want to propose something like that at town meeting, you know, by all means. But I, I'm just saying, based on experience and based on how long it took us to get where we are with the signs and the, you know, the involvement that we had with the business community and with the residents, I would just think you would want to go through a similar process.
Can I make a suggestion? Since we're going to be starting the master plan, I believe, fairly shortly, right? And that's a pretty diverse group of individuals, our residents, board members. So you're going to have a diverse group of people giving opinions and how they view it. Maybe we could ask them to take it up and that we could also go, if it looks like there needs to be change, we could start talking about it for next year. But you'd have a lot of people.
I'm just afraid Bank of America is going to change hands and we're going to have this huge lit up sign there and you can never go back. That's my only fear.
Well. It'd have to go before the ZBA.
Right.
Right?
And I think Kathy's point is well taken, that, that the board, prior to me, worked very hard with businesses in town to create something that everybody could live with. And to shut it down without a sufficient opportunity for involvement.
But a big part of.
I don't think it would be fair.
A big part of that was the format of the sign, not the technology behind it. So a lot of it was the size of the changeable message and we're not talking about messing with that. So we are talking about, I mean, I, I agree with you, but I also think we're talking about changing such a small component of it, which is really just the technology behind the changeable message, or behind the whole thing, I guess, instead of adjusting the space, you know, the sizing and.
Well, do you want to try and get this on the warrant for this year?
I think trying to, well, I mean, I'd get, I think maybe your proposal to, to have a moratorium might be more realistic than having us try to mull through the bylaw itself at this point with very little time left.
How you feel about it?
I think the moratorium, you know, I don't know if we can show a clear danger, but we can certainly show examples of things that we're offended by that we want to prohibit. We have a justification for it, whether it holds up, I don't know.
Yeah, your comment about soul, I mean, about danger, I mean, solar, a moratorium on solar, there's no.
Well, but that's because there weren't, you didn't have a bylaw in place. I'm just, I'm just concerned you're on real shaky ground here. I mean, I'm not an attorney and I'm not saying that lightly, but it's just, when you have, when you put a moratorium in place, it's so that you can, an issue has evolved, you haven't had time to study it and by not putting a moratorium in place, you know, you might be opening yourself up to something that you don't have any regulations for. And you have, you have sign regulations. I mean, I don't know what, I, I'm still not really sure what the issue is. Is it that you want to get rid of the, you know, additional space that you put in so that they could?
It's the technology.
It's the illumination.
It's the way that's lighting, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's not.
Right.
So, so to take your criteria, Kathy, we did a, we did a moratorium on duplexes. And that, this kind of falls into the same category, I think.
So Kathy, for me, when you look at the Northborough dental sign, the top part of that sign that's illuminated from the, internally, where it just says Northborough Family Dental and the phone number, that I don't have a problem with, it's the message board underneath, that.
Which is allowed by right in your zoning.
Because that's the message center portion of it. And I think that, I think that the difference is that when we were developing that bylaw, this technology wasn't necessarily available to the extent that it is now. So was it something that we could anticipate would all of a sudden start happening up and down Route twenty through the town center? At least that would be my argument in support of a moratorium on just, not on signs, but just that one particular portion of the sign.
Well, not even, still allowing the change, I mean, the big, the big issue that was addressed was the changeable message.
Right, so yeah, keep the changeable message, just remove the illumination technology from the application process until we can put a.
Well, this is where we were going back to the building inspector to ask him, could he check it? Because I was wondering if it was the installation, like the illumination was too high, could they bring it down a little bit? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, is it just too high? And so that's what I was saying, is it an installation issue, not necessarily, I don't want to say not a technology issue, but like if they tweaked it, then everybody go, oh, it looks great now, right? That's, that's my thing. And you don't care if a changeable message, if they have a sun on it, right?
I don't know, I just, I didn't like the illumination of the digital graphics.
If you look at town character you're looking at, the old time wooden sign.
Right.
Something that's at Tony Eboo Downwer, the yoga place and, I almost forget the name of it, but right across from.
But then you would talk about getting rid of the Lion sign downtown.
Well, it's already been a grandfathered.
But we don't need any more of them.
But signs always bother me since day one. I agree, I like the old town look, which is wooden, wooden signs. And I agreed that we were, and I, honestly, the sandwich boards didn't bother me that much, but since that was an issue. And I saw the changeable message as being a solution to that issue, but this is.
So you're saying instead of going, because I even was in Westborough and I can see these digital signs going up in Westborough, you're saying that you're asking someone to go out and put lettering up versus actually just doing a digital sign?
I don't know, I guess I want to explore what the options are.
I just feel like that technology wise, it's going like backwards.
It is going backwards.
I know.
That does go backwards, yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't think I can go backwards.
So I guess maybe your point is also well taken, that perhaps it's just a question of dimming it down a bit.
Yeah, instead of.
Because I don't have a problem with changing the message. And I don't have, I don't even have a problem with the graphic there, it's just so bright and in your face all the time.
Yeah, I mean, it's their livelihood, I'm not trying to do anything to jeopardize their livelihood. And not allowing them to put changeable message up has an impact on.
But if you think of it, twenty-two degrees, four o'clock doesn't even help their business. I mean, it's a changeable message, but it's not even promoting the business.
But I, I'm not quite sure as a planning board, we would have the right to tell somebody what they could put up on their board.
No, no, but I'm just saying, it's not hurting their business if it's, if it's not there. Because it's not like that's something that, you know, was actually bringing business. It says the temperature and the sun.
Well, sometimes he does advertise his.
Well, has his, the one above it, I think is his website. I don't know, now I'm kind of on the fence about the whole thing.
I am not in favor of having a business go up, we want to become a business friendly community. I am so not in favor of having a business come out and put those little stickies up there. I just think we've come a long way.
When you put it that way.
I don't know if they all have to.
Because there's always a letter missing.
The schools are digital.
The high school is digital.
All the elements.
Different, it's not the big message centers with the colors and the pictures. That's the digital, like dotted letters. Like they're two different things, at least in Marlboro they are. There's electronic message center and a message board, they're two different. So this is more like a computer LCD screen.
Yeah, but at the high school, they, they change the messages constantly.
Right, but it's not bright and it's just the digital dots, it's not.
It just might be older technology. I mean, I don't know enough about this to lead a discussion about this tonight. I have no idea how, whether the Lions Club sign is the same as the dental sign.
I think it's, I think it's monochromatic. I think that the difference is that there's an awful lot of color going on at the dental sign and there's not in some of these other signs. So for me, St. Bernadette's, they're just, they're black and orange lettering, but it's just really bright. And so if the, if the problem can be solved by just a reduction in the lumens during nighttime hours, then maybe that's really what we need. And I guess, is there a way to find out whether that's within the jurisdiction of the zoning enforcement officer?
That is, he did indicate that, I remember him saying that at one meeting. That, and that he was, I think, going to have the local inspector check on the dental sign, the dentist's sign. And I can follow up with that tomorrow. I mean, just as, you know, whether you go forward with this or not, but I mean, just to, you know, if the, if there's an overall issue with the brightness of that sign, you know, that's, that's something within his jurisdiction as a building inspector that he can ask them to, you know, tone it down, but that's not the technical term, but.
So I, I would say that given the late date I proposed at town meeting and when everything is.
So I, I would say that given the late date I proposed at town meeting and when everything is due for the warrants, that it's probably not the best time to suggest a complete change in the bylaws, but let's explore what we can do in a more immediate sense to sort of effectuate somewhere closer to the change we're looking for. And then use this next period of time to figure out whether we need a new bylaw or whether this is something working between design review and the zoning enforcement officer, whether we can effectuate the change we're looking for without having to get the town to come on board with another change to the sign bylaw. That would be my suggestion.
I mean, just, you know, looking through this real quickly as you're talking tonight, what, you know, as part of what's allowed in town is a changeable, changeable copy signs that provide a variable message, the content of which can be changed by manual or electronic means are allowed. So that's whether they do CVS where someone manually puts letters up there or whether it's, you know, the electronic and, you know, someone does it on a keyboard someplace. So that's, you know, that's in under just the basic requirements of signs. And then you go into each business district and it talks about the freestanding signs having, that they can have, you know, a fixed sign and they, they can also have a changeable copy message. And there was additional space added to each sign so that they could put in that changeable. And so that's, that's in the downtown business, business east, business west, business south, highway business. And. I don't, oh, and industrial. So it, so it's in every business district and, and the industrial district. That, that the changeable copy is, is, can be done as part of the freestanding.
Okay. I don't know enough about signs, but I know that in Marlboro, they, they broke out digital display signs, the message boards like you just read, and the EMC signs, but maybe we can look to and have in the future something for the EMC signs. Cause they have a whole huge paragraph about brightness and color and how it can fade. And you can only have a single dark color and the message still be a single contrasting color. Like they have a lot about lumens and colors and, you know, they can't grow, melt, x-ray, scroll, you know, they twinkle. They have all sorts of rules that going forward, it, cause this is so new, we might end up with a sign that does all this crazy stuff that we didn't even foresee. So I think it might be worth just to read what they have for.
I mean, I'm sure there's.
He was looking at was this information part.
I'm sure there's volumes of information, you know, many communities that, that.
Right, right.
You know, have more up to date signs, bylaws and, you know, and then there's the whole Doc Sky organization that, you know, you could obtain information from too, so.
Right.
So I just, I just don't, it's just not, I don't think it should, that it's just a quick fix because I think it impacts a lot of people.
So this side, what is your pledge?
It's a little more complex than I realized. I guess we need to study it.
Okay.
To me too, so as it gets.
Yeah, I, I don't like the idea of having a point of no return. I'm not sure we have a choice. I think we've dug our hole and we need to sit in it for a while.
And I, I agree, I think we're a little too close to the deadline to, to do it now.
Can we agree to that on this side?
So we're not going to drop the issue, we're just not going to rush to the finish line on it. Okay, thank you, stay on top of it, keep bringing the stuff.
I think it's a good issue to talk about at the master plan too.
And so then we just have ZBA update?
Yep.
Sure.
Just to finish my note to myself, okay. So the. For the next ZBA meeting, a couple of people have dropped off the, have dropped off the schedule. 89 West Main Street, which the design review committee continues to work with that applicant. They have asked for an extension to the February meeting. 200 Bartlett Street, which I don't have on here, but some of you has, have asked about. 200 Bartlett Street has, the, the company that was coming in for a variance is no longer operating there. There were a lot of fire and building violations happening.
Is that the moving company?
No, it was a landscaping company.
Okay, yeah.
And they were operating to begin with, without any permits. And so we had them file and then in the meantime, there was a fire or something there. And then when, so when it was inspected, then it was determined, you know, how many ongoing violations there really were. So the, the company just left, so they're, they're no longer on the agenda.
Did they leave a forwarding address or did they just leave?
You want to chase them or?
I'm just curious.
So, so the other applicant, I mean, there's, there's a couple smaller applicants as far as single family houses, which I have not routinely brought before you, but, so as far as a commercial or industrial application, Herb Chambers, the Honda dealership on Route 9, which is, you know, 95% in Westboro, but the entrance is off of Route 9 in the Northborough portion. So they are proposing a, a small addition to their service building. And it's under 2,500 square feet and what they're proposing, and again, the majority of it's going to be in Westboro and not Northboro. But they have requested of both Northboro and Westboro to have their original special permit and site plan amended. So they were originally approved in 2003 and in 2004, they came back and, and had a couple of things revised. And so that's, basically that's what they're before the ZBA for. They did go to, to design review, design review had some suggestions about signage on, on the pavement to delineate, you know, where cars need to go for service, cause that's what this is, is too service based that they're adding. It's a covered area where people can drive into, you know, drive their cars into and drop their cars off, so. And they, and they've also asked for a variance on one of their signs so that they can, I guess, have an additional sign to delineate where the service area is versus where the car sales area is.
Yeah, they're pretty much just cleaning up the signs on their building. And then the pavement was necessary because they cross from the left to the right. And then it's valet service as they enter, so.
And if I could just comment on that, cause that was the topic of the groundwater meeting this evening.
Right, they had groundwater, yeah.
And basically what happened was there was operation and maintenance plan put into place in 2004, which said that they have to sweep twice a year and they have to clean out there, catch basins, a couple of things like that. Herb Chambers Group bought this about five or six years ago and never did it. And then they came before us with the attitude that, well, we never did it in the past, but we're going to develop this really sophisticated operation and maintenance plan that's going to actually be more comprehensive than the last one. And you'll have to take our word that we're going to follow that. And, and I raised the point, I said, I don't think you should be before us if you've never complied with this. So I'd recommend that the zoning board of appeals make sure that you're in compliance before they even listen to your request for a special permit. So we'll see what happens on that. The, the problem is a lot of these companies can, they, they develop an operation and maintenance plan, which their civil engineer does. And it's pretty comprehensive and it's really good protection for the environment. And it requires work to be done and reports to be sent to the town engineer. And they do it the first year and then that company sells to somebody else who doesn't bother reading the restrictions and doesn't do it. And then years go by and eventually there's going to be a lot of damage to the environment.
Did Duddy Ford do it? That was Duddy Ford's place, right? Or was Duddy?
Rag Steel.
Uh, it was Rag Steel initially.
Rag, okay, so did they do the maintenance?
We don't know. Nothing was filed with the town.
And when we had talked to them about signage, we asked them, do you delineate between maintenance this way or showroom this way or any direction to give people as they enter into your, you know, your facility? And they said, we don't know. And we said, could you answer, do you have any type of signage to help people know? And they said, we don't really know. And so we said at that point, if you don't know, then we're going to request that you put some on the pavement. Because people would be driving in, crossing from the left lane over to the right lane to get into the bay.
They didn't know whether they had signage?
They didn't know. So that's why we requested.
This is an engineering firm that was recently hired.
Oh, okay.
By Herb Chambers and they've never worked on this project before.
Did you think they would have done a site visit before they showed up to the town?
Oh, they've done a lot of work on the site, but.
Okay, now is there anything the town could do? I'm concerned about the groundwater too, cause these companies come, mostly these car dealerships, and they get permits to build on groundwater, but then like George said, they never do it.
Well, most of the.
It's not the car, it's, it's almost universally.
Oh, so it could be a landscape with pesticides and herbicides.
Sure.
Like up on, on Bartlett Street.
Yeah.
You know, that, when they put the large development, industrial developments up there, they have.
But if it's part of a decision and they don't do the yearly reports.
Well, there's, if I understand it correctly, we don't have any, the town doesn't have any capacity to find them for not doing it. And we don't have resources to man, to go out and manage who is or isn't filing reports. So if we had a dedicated enforcement officer for those types of reporting requirements, then we could deal with that. But that's a huge job, given the amount of development we've got in the town and we don't have the resources to do it.
It seems like the water is really important.
It is, I'm not minimizing the importance of water.
So I think what, what happens is how it gets addressed is, is exactly the situation where they're coming in to, you know, revise or renew something. And then, you know, they're, they're put on notice. I'm, I'm going to guess that within the next week, we're, we're going to see a ton of inspectional logs.
You better believe it.
Filed with the town with either, and I forget whether it's the town engineer, the building inspector or both. So that, you know, that's, you know, it's, it's not the best way, it's not the ideal way, but that's one way that, that we kind of can catch up on, on these, you know, when it was a, when it was a condition in the decision, so.
What the town has the ability to do is to revoke the permit.
Right.
They can't find them necessarily, but they can just revoke the permit and say, your doors are closed until you do this.
Right.
So maybe that's something we should do.
I think a couple of times it should happen and then maybe they take it seriously.
Yeah, I think one or two businesses get shut down for a while.
Cause there are towns that I've heard, you know how the people were pulling out that dirt on 135 and then they came in after the fact and asked for a permit? There are towns that have done that and the town goes back and says, put it all back. And actually forces them to repair it. But I think that happens a couple of times and people get serious and stop breaking the rules, yeah.
On the Unisign building that's on Main Street, they're coming in February, they're doing a nice job. They're actually taking that building down and they're going to be pushing it back. It's going to have commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor.
Oh, that's good.
So it's going to be a, a lot different than what's there now.
It should look significantly different if it, if it, if it all works.
Yep.
What else we have on ZBA?
And then on February 27th, so the, I believe you probably received a copy of the application in the mail. But King Street, the King Street parcel is back. 3943 King Street is where the applicant had originally, a year or so ago, proposed 16 units in total. So it was a building of eight and another building of eight townhouses. So what he's proposing now is, which requires a special permit in the zoning, is a assisted living facility. And so he just recently filed, so he'll be initially heard in February. Came to the design review, you know, just very preliminary. And they provided quite a bit of feedback for him. He's originally, he originally proposed 66 beds. And, and he's been asked by staff and by the design review committee to, you know, take another look at that. It's a lot of building for that site. It, it, again, it's allowed by zoning, but you know, they, they've, you know, they've, we and the, and the design review committee have asked, I mean, Michelle, I wasn't at the meeting unfortunately, but I don't know if you have any details, Michelle, you want?
Yeah, it's, it's actually, I think would look good, he just needs to scale it down. Because you can't, the fire department can't get behind the building, just the nature of the business within the building. They need to be able to have access on all sides of the building. He needs to scale it down, so.
What about sewer, it's not on town sewer with 65 beds?
Well, they'll go on septic.
Can they? I thought he had a, oh, it's a septic system though, but it's not town sewer.
No, it's septic, it'll be on septic, he'll keep it on septic, he won't go with sewer. I think he has that option to do that, right Kathy?
Yes, he could, he could connect it to town sewer, but it's not mandatory.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, for, for reasons, you know, I, I think part budget, part the, the feedback that he received from a lot of the neighbors that didn't want sewer in King Street, he's moving forward with doing it on, on a septic system.
So the primary thing is, is lack of parking. It is not a skilled nursing facility, there'll be nothing skilled about it in the facility as far as nursing goes. So it's not like a Coleman house or a Beaumont or Whitney place that offers a combination of assisted plus skilled. It's just straight assisted living. But I think when you look at the scale of the building, there's no way you could get any type of fire apparatus or any truck behind the building at all. And on the lower level of the building is where all of their social events will be happening with their, you know, the people who stay there. So it's going to be.
So the lower level is going to be in the backside.
The backside and so, and there's going to be also an underground parking garage. So there's, there's at least two parts of the building that the fire department cannot get to, you know, police or whomever needs to go there, other than walking around. And so that's difficult for, the, the size of the building is going to be three floors. So with that, I think if he scales it down to a smaller building, it'll be a nice project.
Underground parking garage, that's a first in town, isn't it?
Well, I think the reason for it is that he doesn't have the space for the parking.
Yeah, no, actually out on West Main Street, no, excuse me, Main Street.
Yeah.
The.
Other assisted living.
Right, actually it's not assisted living, it was.
It's an over 55.
Over 55.
Yeah, Pheasant Hill.
Pheasant Hill.
Are they underground?
I'm just repeating everything Michelle says, cause it's coming to my head. Sorry about that.
For a question.
But yes, but that's underground parking.
So whether it's an over, an over 55, they could say to you, if you'd like, you know, for a little bit more, you can have underground parking, right? Or you can go out in the elements, right? In assisted living, they'll know that the clientele, just by the nature of, you know, how many, that maybe only a quarter of the population may bring their cars with them or half, data's already sort of there. So they want to be able to offer that as an option. Still regardless of whether they do, I mean, I think they're going to need it, they just don't have that much parking there for their staff, so they're going to need it. I just don't, I think 66 is just too much and I think the building needs to be at least a third of it gone so they can get a fire truck behind there, just for safety purposes.
Is there a steep drop off in the back too? Will it be a wall? Is there like a retaining wall?
Uh, no, because it's more wetlands in the back.
Right, but it's a steep, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, the grade level.
He, I know with the townhouses, he did have a retaining wall.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't know actually if that's part of.
I think the retaining wall with the townhouses was between the townhouses.
I think when I looked at the drawings, there was like a 20 feet grade between like the, the back lot and in the basement.
But even when he wanted to do the condos, he had the idea of having a workout center in the back. And the fire department said, well, what if someone, something happens and you have to get emergency vehicles back there? You know, so again, we had created it so that a driver would go down there and you could be able to get an ambulance down there.
Right, and that was off to the side.
So my concern is you have an older population, all of their social activities from the gym to everything is in the back bottom part of the building and you cannot access that unless you go through an elevator. So you should be able to pull a fire truck around the back and get immediate access. So we'll see what happens.
So that, so again, that just, you know, that, that's not for the January meeting, that's right now scheduled for February.
Any other business?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a little party to go to next week, it's on Thursday night. I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a little party to go to next week. It's on Thursday night.
Oh, I totally forgot about that.
If you still have your reening, red and green attire, you can wear it.
Find something, I'm sure. Anything else on this side?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
And then the twenty-fourth, just, it will be with Judy.
Spending a lot of time together these.
Two nights.
The twenty-fourth and then with town.
But that just came in, so that's, actually, no, thank you, Leslie. I, I can add that in. The, I haven't scheduled it yet. I think, I think that's going to be before the planning board. I think it was just, came in yesterday or today.
Okay.
The, there is an application before all of you, and I believe it's before the, will be before the planning board. But it's up on Barefoot Road, and a gentleman, excuse me, who wants to put in, storage facility isn't really the, the right name for this. It's, he's putting in one building, but with multiple units that he will himself run his own business out of. It's kind of similar to what some of Otis Street happened. It was a self-storage facility, and then they converted it over, part of it, so that individual businesses rented space and stored their equipment, and, you know, had a telephone line, that type of thing. And that's what this gentleman is proposing to, so. We've been working with him in-house, and that will be on, actually, if, if February twentieth is not going to work for everyone, can we look at a different date? Because there's not enough time, staff-wise, to get, to, to review him adequately and get him on the February sixth agenda. So if we were looking at, the twenty-seventh, I have ZBA, if we wanted to go to the, to the next week. But we could do, you know, I, I, I don't know how the nights work for folks, but.
First will be a CPC meeting, so that won't work.
Well, I was looking at the twenty-eighth, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth.
Oh, yeah, no, I am. Never mind. Twenty-seven.
Twenty-first would work for me.
There, you could also do the, the twenty-sixth. We would just be downstairs.
That works for me, too.
I could do the twenty-eighth, but not the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-eighth, that's fine. Can you do the twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth is good.
That's a Wednesday.
All right, so we're moving the twentieth to the twenty-eighth?
Yep.
So the sixth and the twenty-eighth?
Yes, yep.
That's Al Jarzis, huh?
Yep. And, and the sixth, if you just sort of want to, all right, I'm sorry to do this to you, but I'm thinking of, now I'm, now I'm just rethinking February, because the sixth, I won't have time to advertise for, for a public hearing for the sixth. So if we looked at the thirteenth and just did one meeting in February on the thirteenth.
That works for me.
I can do it.
Does that work for everyone?
That's a potential groundwater meeting.
Well, I'll, I'll ask Fred if he can do that at six, if that, if that happens. Because what that, because what that accomplishes is the, me being able to advertise a zoning hearing, and then it just, it moves that gentleman up a week, and we just stay, you know, because the sixth, there really isn't any business for you on the sixth right now. And there wouldn't be. There isn't enough time for someone to file and then get on the sixth agenda.
So we're talking what?
So would Feb, so would February thirteenth work instead of? Okay.
But not, not on the twenty-eighth, then?
Correct, right.
Yeah.
So the thirteenth instead of, that's the only one that.
So we're not going to be here on the sixth?
Correct.
Oh, great, because I didn't put it in my agenda. Just fine for me. But we are seeing each other on the twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fourth also, the twenty-fourth for a meeting.
Yeah.
And then March, you know, would be the regular schedule.
Would you keep doing this, March? Okay. What day is town meeting?
Town meeting starts on April twenty-third.
So for February, we have the thirteenth and the twenty-eighth, right?
No, just the thirteenth.
No, twenty-eighth?
Nope.
Okay.
Dinner next week is six, is that?
Yeah, I was just going to ask. Our reservation is, I have down five, but I think that's too early. Is that?
Definitely too early. I have six o'clock down.
It's too early to eat, so I will edit that. I'll make sure that I call them for six. Six is good for everybody? Okay. We have five board members and five of you guys, right?
Wow.
Yes.
Yes.
I haven't been to Romaine since they re.
Oh, I've been there a few times. It's good.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the pictures?
Like the pictures, like the renovation. I don't like the look of it from the pictures that I've seen.
Oh, okay, so it's really more about the, sorry, food. It's more about the food.
Yeah, well, food's the same, right?
All set? Make a motion to dismiss.
How about, will you adjourn instead?
Adjourn.
You're all dismissed.
George, George and I might want to make a motion to dismiss, but you guys might want to just adjourn.
You can probably edit from when we started talking about the party.
Do you want to adjourn yet?
I thought you just did.
Uh, we're done.
We're done. Bye.
You can probably edit it.
Motion to adjourn.
We're done.